All right. We'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for May the eighth. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for each and every one of the individuals that came out tonight to hear the issues going on with the city. Lord, I'm asking you to give us wisdom and insight and understanding as we go forward to make these decisions. Help us to make the best decisions possible. Lord, I'm asking you to be with each and every one of us here as well as when we go home in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mark, would you like to introduce our new HR director?
She's waiting for it.
Okay.
This is Sherry Bagnell. She's just started her second week with us. Sherry, I was probably gonna say, Mark, why are you reading all this? But she received her bachelor's degree from the Florida State University in psychology. So Randy has to watch out down there. But she comes with us with about 24 years' experience.
Wow.
Right around. Twenty-one of it was solid waste authority in Palm Beach County. She'd probably still be there, but she moved. Her husband got a job, she moved. So but she's done some consulting work and she has a lot of experience. She was down there as a manager and filled in as a director with about, what, 400, 300, 400 employees? So she's already proven herself be a professional in the weeks she's been here. The city manager's given her a lot to work on, but she's doing a great job and we're blessed to have her.
Lord knows we need it.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome aboard, Sherry.
Right ahead.
All right. We'll move on to item number five. This will be the Highlands County NAACP Memorial Day Celebration. Do we have Al Norton with us? Yes, sir. If you will, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Al Norton. My address is forty-three fifty-three Mercedes Street, Sebring, Florida.
Yes, sir.
I am the chairman of the NAACP Veterans Affairs and every year we sponsor the Veterans Day and also Memorial Day. And Memorial Day is that's upcoming now and we plan to have celebration of, you know, the fallen soldiers. So we want to have something to recognize us all of them.
Okay. We have the request here before us, so they're not looking to close any roads or anything like that. Is there any questions for the applicant?
No, just thankful.
Seeing none, does anyone care to make a motion?
Just have one, a couple of things we need to have at that during the day is that econ, two trash cans, electric box, and the cones.
Okay. Staff, is there any issues with those requests?
No.
The electric's always down there and we'll get the extra garbage cars.
Okay. Very good. Once again, I'll ask, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve B five for the Highlands County NAACP Memorial Day Celebration.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Norton, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, we have an event request for the Heartland Helping Hands Firecracker Festival. Do we have Sherri Eason with us? Yes.
Yes, she's here.
Once again, if you'll please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sherry Eason, four oh one Lime Tree Drive, Sebring, Florida. But my heart resides here, just putting that out there.
All right.
I'm Shane Eason, four oh one Lime Tree Drive, Sebring, Florida.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure which one you guys have up there on there first. We're here for two different events tonight. One of them is the Firecracker Festival.
That's first.
Okay. That one, we would like the city's blessing to hold at Donaldson Park, the day of the fireworks, the Fourth of July. There would be a Miss Firecracker pageant that would be headed up by Miss Carrie Bryant, who also did the Miss Saban Park pageant. This would not be a scholarship pageant. It would just be for the event itself. We would have minimal vendors, like we're talking maybe one each of different kinds of things, maybe in total to have six or eight vendors. Nothing huge. We want to primarily focus on like barbecue foods and burgers and hot dogs. There would be a DJ. We are actively trying to seek out a way to get a beer truck. That has not been an easy task. I know it's been done at events in Saban Park in the past, but it seems like it's not an easy task to do anymore. So we, we found some possibilities between the newer. That's, this is his thing.
J.J. Taylor.
Okay.
Basically, I've spoken with J.J. Taylor and they have availability if we get our own temporary license through the state. You can do, I think it's a seventy-two hour license, three-day type deal through the state, which we're more than willing to step up to and our insurance will cover as well.
Okay. All right. I see a couple of things in there. Is this like a family event?
Yes, it would be like family fun day, family picnic day. We, our intentions are to have maybe a bounce house or two. We would also like to have, the DJ is gonna play music. We would have vendors selling things like, you know, the glow necklaces, glow sticks for the kids and sparklers. Nothing, no fireworks, none of that stuff, that sort of thing that could catch fire.
Alcohol and fireworks don't mix?
No.
Okay. And if they do, it's on private property, not public?
That's Hardy County.
Can't say that on TV.
You can say whatever you want, doesn't mean there's not repercussions for it, but.
It would just be a family picnic day. We would invite people, in promoting this, we would invite people to pack a picnic, to bring their own. They do not need to buy food from anyone, you know? Bring your chairs, bring your blankets. They're already gonna be coming out for the fireworks. So the idea is to kind of feed off of that a little bit, since everybody's gonna be there anyway. There's, there's kind of no reason to have an empty park with no events going on for the kids.
Sure.
So we would have children's activities, like, you know, cornhole and horseshoes, the kids games, the Jenga, maybe some sack races, you know, just little fun things that they can't get hurt with. And music vendors, food vendors, that sort of thing. We would have general merchandise vendors, but like I said, they would be minimal. We don't want a big, we don't want it to be about the vendors. We want it to be about family time. And that's, that's pretty much all that we have in mind for, for this specific. In the future, we would like to add to it, but not this year.
Okay. What about security?
It would just be for, from about ten in the morning until probably when the fireworks are over, what, eight, nine o'clock at night? I'm not sure.
Yeah, probably nine thirty or so.
We can have security there if it's required. I didn't think it was necessary for a day event, but if it needs to be, then we won't make that.
The only concern is just the sales of alcohol there?
Yeah.
You know?
Yes. Okay. So is there a minimum amount of security because we would need to get in touch with the law enforcement?
I believe it's two, is it not?
I think we leave it up to the sheriff's department as to what's necessary. Or the city manager, who's also familiar with law enforcement.
Okay. So that would be a stipulation if we're even able to get alcohol. Now, if we are not able to do that part, is the security still necessary?
I mean, I would say probably not. The, there's typically a crowd there every single year, regardless of having an event or not. You know, we all kind of know that. But.
Depends on.
The question I've been getting when we mention this is people are asking, can we bring our own, you know, bring our own beer, sort of thing? And I have not been able to answer that. I keep saying, I can't answer questions.
It's open container, no, unless it's, unless it's approved by the city.
Okay. So it has to be something purchased on the premises if we are having those premises.
Right. Otherwise, it's an open container, which is a violation. But the, I think even if it's a large event, we require security. If it's, you know, a smaller event, then we don't require security in most cases. But I, I leave that to the city staff because they have discretion with regard to what, whether they think it's necessary or not.
Okay. Understood.
Mark, any insight into law enforcement needs?
Yes, I would say if there's alcohol there, I highly recommend you make sure there's, you say security, but there'll be off-duty deputy sheriffs like you hired. And certainly the sheriff's office is gonna require in crowds like that a minimum two so they can be together, have immediate backup. And, and they would need to be there through the entire event because you mix alcohol with crowds and families coming out there just to watch fireworks. You're probably, possibly, most likely gonna run into some trouble.
Sure. And for Fourth of July, we typically have the brush truck driving around, specifically the area where they're shooting off the fireworks. Chief? Chief says yes.
There we go. Yes. We usually call in a couple of extra people, just because other people are shooting off fireworks too. So we call in a couple of extra people and we have the brush truck sitting over in that area.
So you typically have somebody kind of watching where the city's shooting them off and then over by the park as well where the largest crowd is?
We usually have our, just a fire station over here kind of watching the park.
Okay.
But we have a truck on the other side of the lake too.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I mean, as far as the event goes, my gut reaction is probably do without the alcohol first time around. Get your, get your feet wet with it, see how it turns out for you. And then if you want to grow bigger and better next time, that would alleviate a lot of the potential problems.
I like that idea. So that would mean we don't necessarily need security then?
Well, I'd leave that, leave that up to the city management with regard to size. But the alcohol is automatic, okay?
Then we can skip the alcohol this year, absolutely. I think that's a good idea for our first year, just to see how things go. And then maybe in the future, we might want to consider that maybe alcohol sales don't start until maybe, I don't know, a certain time to a certain time. It needs to stop way before the event's over.
Yeah.
So people are not trying to leave the premises, having alcohol.
Yeah, I think you'll get a pretty good idea of the crowd you're dealing with the first time around. And then you can make the judgment call at that point. Is that something you really want to step into or not?
If anybody asks whether they can bring alcohol, the answer to that is it's an open container and it's violation. And so, you know, if, if a police officer happens to be there or gets called there by a family or something like that, that, that's not a good thing.
That is good information to have. I did not know that, but thank you.
Yep. But I'm only one of five, so other council members, any insight, ideas, feelings?
No, I'm good with that decision. I think that's really smart not to try the alcohol this time around. And this way you can see exactly how everything works this year and then maybe you can fine-tune it for next year. And then you can also make the decision whether you think it's worth having the alcohol sales there, let alone the cost you'd have to pay for the security of the sheriff being there. So I think it's a great idea. I like the idea that you're kind of like starting out, kind of like small scale, just trying to get your feet wet and see how it goes. And then you decide whether you want to grow or not grow, or whether it's a good decision or not. So I, I like the idea and I'm for it and I'm definitely for without having alcohol this year.
Anyone else?
Did you say that you have established an alcohol, a beer truck or you have not?
I've been in contact with J.J. Taylor out of, I believe, Fort Charlotte. And I've been in contact with their commercial sales. And they are willing, they do have, they do have the ability to, to provide alcoholic beverages. They do it on a, on a kind of a guesstimate scale. They guess how many people we're gonna have. They bring it in and then it's a pay after the fact to have whatever you, whatever you sell is what you pay for.
Bernie Little does the same thing.
I would, I would love to have them, but I have no contact from them over months and months and months of sending emails and calls.
Just what I've seen at previous events, that's all.
That's what we want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with Jim. I say no on the alcohol. I feel like the alcohol kind of changes the atmosphere of the family event. I would rather keep it family oriented. I feel like that's safer.
Agreed.
Yep.
Anything else?
Sherry, what time does your event go until? Did you say before the fireworks or after the fireworks?
We would want to start the family picnic day, the events, the activities and stuff for the kids and all the, have the vendors there at ten AM.
Okay.
Because we've kind of observed over the years that people start showing up at the parks somewhere around ten, eleven. They want to go swimming, that sort of thing. And they bring their chairs. So you see them about five o'clock in the afternoon, go get their chairs out of the trunk of the car and they're ready to get set up, wait for the fireworks. So we're trying to play off what we see people already doing so that we can feed on, you know, what's already happening.
Well, as.
I'm just.
I was just gonna say that I looked up the code for the city on this and I'm actually wrong. It's not just open containers. No alcohol is allowed in city parks unless it's a special event that's organized through the city, city manager's department.
Okay. That will be, we will make sure that that information is put on the website, the information that no alcohol, no alcohol allowed on the.
The open, open container thing goes for any parking lots, city semi-public, things like that.
Okay. I'm retaining all of this for future reference as well, so thank you.
I just have one more question. Your DJ that you're gonna have that night, is he, will he be playing while the fireworks are going? I mean, like, is he gonna coordinate with the fireworks?
He's gonna stop playing, it's gonna be featured mainly, you know, of course kid-friendly type music. But when the fireworks start, what we are gonna ask for him to do, he's waiting for us to kind of give him a feel for what we want. But what we're gonna ask for is if he'll turn, turn it down and just play the, no, no, nothing but patriotic music.
Okay.
So that kind of enhances the fireworks, but we don't want it to overpower him, that sort of thing.
Sure.
So if you're in the vicinity, it kind of enhances the experience, but you're not gonna hear it down the road.
Okay, I guess, what I was wondering.
One other question. What, what time is that pageant gonna be though? Is that gonna be earlier in the day?
I'm not sure if Carrie has given us an exact time or not, but I do know that it's probably gonna be earlier in the day so that the ladies that are participating can enjoy the rest of the festivities for the day. But I do not have an exact time on the pageant. We've got things lined up, but nothing is really written still yet because we wanted to wait to speak to the city council to see if this was even allowed.
Yeah.
We just had the Blueberry Festival that was huge. So we wasn't sure if this would even be welcomed this year.
No, it's, I mean, it's something that I've said for a long time. Why in the world wouldn't you have an event? Because people are gonna be there anyway, you know? So.
That was Carrie's idea. She was the one who presented this to the board and she said the same thing. They're already filling up the park. The park is packed all day long.
Right.
You know, we need to, you know, make it appear as though the city is appreciating that and giving something back, so.
The only last question I have for you is, are you planning to occupy a certain number of the overhangs or the pavilions? Just because there's gonna be people that showing up that are probably gonna be snagging them if you're planning on using some of them, so.
Honestly, I don't think we're gonna use any of them, to be honest. We might take one, you know, for, you know, Heartland Helping Hands, kind of like a headquarters or something.
Sure.
No, the DJ is gonna be insisting on being on the stage. We have to have a stage for the pageant. So there will be a stage. And the vendors are gonna have to have their own tents or their food trucks, whatever the case is. We're not gonna be going full force with it. No, we will not be using that ability to maybe one.
Okay. All right. Was there any further questions?
No.
Seeing none, does anyone want to make a motion with the exception of the alcohol there?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve B seven, or I'm sorry, B six for the Heartland Helping Hands Firecracker Festival.
With the exception of the.
With the exception of the sailed alcohol.
Okay.
Well, I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item number seven.
Okay.
You guys again.
I'll try to keep this one as brief as I can. Shane's gonna have a lot of input for this one.
Okay.
There's gonna have to, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions. It is going to be, we are trying to start up a monthly event and call it Friday Night Live. It is the equivalent to the same thing that many of our surrounding neighbor cities are doing First Friday. However, First Baptist Church has something we, we've been told, we don't know that for a fact, but they seem to think that they're doing the First Fridays in at the church. And there's a lot of home football games, that sort of thing going on, we don't want to interfere with. So we don't want to lock ourselves into a First Friday sort of thing. We would like to do it monthly and we would like to aim for having it the last Friday of every month. Again, we don't want First Friday, Last Friday in the title because we don't want to be stuck with that. You know, if there's, if Last Friday in the month again falls on holiday or something like that, obviously it would not be the right place on that Friday. And then as the same, this is part of the same event, but it would be every quarter, every third month. It would not just be Friday Night Live. It would be a block party like they do in Frostproof, Hardy County does it, Sebring does it. Now to kind of explain what Friday Night Live would be. It would be where we ask the local businesses on Main Street to open their doors, maybe stay open a little bit later, offer a special for that night, that sort of thing. We would also have handful of local vendors. We're not gonna be wanting out of town. This is strictly local. We want local vendors to set up, you know, just a small amount, kind of like what we're doing for the, the Firecracker Festival. So that people can, can browse and pick up a few things. There would be a handful of food trucks, maybe two, three, maybe sometimes only one. But the idea is to get people into Eighteen East and the depot, the, the.
Diving Girl.
Diving Girl, diner. I am so sorry. You know, and then we have the restaurant that's just a little bit further up. I can never remember the name of it, but.
Little Italy.
Little Italy.
Little Italy.
Anyway, every time I smell it, I want to go running down there. But, and then we've got the taproom down there and then the ice cream. So what we're trying to do is get this localized to a point to where people have sidewalk access to get to these locations. And it draws people out. There would be a DJ at every event. There would be maybe on, we're gonna try to do most, depends on what our insurance allows, a bounce house for the kids. There would be a public movie showing where they would sit, you know, somewhere and the kids would watch TV or, you know, a movie or something like that. Music, of course, the eating. Now, there would be on occasion, if we could get this to work. I do believe other cities are doing the alcohol as well, the beer, the beer truck thing. Or where we get one of the local, like the taproom or Eighteen East or something that is offering that sort of thing from their establishment instead of having the truck come in. And that is his domain because I didn't check into any of that stuff.
Is the idea that it would be at the same spot every time?
Yes. And that is the big factor. Our first choice that we want to ask the city for is would you allow us to do this on Main Street, in the median, in front of where it starts at Lake Avenue? Not the intersection where Lake Avenue is. We do not want that intersection, just where the grass line starts, where the brickle building is and the gym. And go down, all that median and then all the next one.
Basically from the brickle to the park?
Yes. It would be those two. And what that would do is that would allow all the access in the middle, all the access, of course, in the street and then on the side so that people can safely use the sidewalk then to go further up if they wanted to go to the taproom or they wanted to go to the diving girl diner, that sort of thing. So it kind of connects, but we would only need to close one small section. If that's not possible, we have a Plan B and we have a Plan C. I don't like Plan C.
What's Plan B?
Plan B is for you guys to let us use Lake Avenue, the side where the ice cream company is because that is the width of a four-lane road because there's parallel parking on both sides. That would give us plenty of space. It's a side street, just like Frostproof and Sebring and all of this. We could also, you know, have our, our lights. They have those lights up there. You can't have that on Main Street because you've got, you know, sometimes big trucks.
State road, yeah.
Then it would also, if we were coming off of Lake Avenue, you've got First Baptist Church on the other side. We were aiming the music this way so that it's not disturbing anything that might be going on in the churches or the neighbors down, the neighbors down there. Then you've got Lake Avenue comes out here, Main Street branches out, you've got Eighteen East down here, you've got the taproom, you've got the diner this way.
Right.
Again, full access by sidewalks. So it's safe. And again, it's, this is primarily to get people interacting with, you know, the, participating in more of local businesses. And if we can get this going, this will make more businesses want to come to the, in downtown Main Street because they'll see that there's more activity.
Yeah.
Now, every third month, which would be once every quarter, that would shift. It would be the same day, same exact thing, but we would title it a block party. And that's where the music would be a little bit louder. It would be catered to, you know, all different, you know, what, well, they're gonna change the music up for all of them anyway. But anyway, I don't know what the difference is gonna be except there's gonna be dancing and I, I'm assuming it'll be louder. And it would be focused more on the dancing and party aspect of it than it would be the vendors and the bounce house and that sort of thing.
Couple of questions. Have you talked to the, in that area specifically, have you talked to the businesses that are there?
We have not yet.
Okay. That'd probably be the biggest thing to see because, you know, if the businesses are all for it, then obviously you're not gonna have much pushback from, because they're gonna be included, right?
Yes.
It's gonna, it's gonna benefit them. Obviously, if you're a business that's gonna be open during these hours and you're open to the public that sells something, it's gonna be a good thing for you unless you can't get people in and out or there's some type of logistical problem or if it's just that crowd doesn't jive with the crowd that normally goes in your business or whatever. We obviously don't have much open on Main Street after hours, so probably a mute issue. But have you given any thought to the Donaldson Park or Museum Avenue?
The idea with Donaldson Park is it would defeat our purpose of trying to get people using the downtown businesses.
Out of the targeted, targeted area.
Yes. And the same thing pretty much with Museum Avenue. The not being on Museum Avenue was kind of a choice of mine and that's mainly because that is where specific types of events have been held, you know, relating to art and culture and stuff like that. And this is something completely different. And my concern is that people are gonna think it's like the same thing. They're not gonna catch on that we're playing off of the same thing that the surrounding towns are doing. That's another thing too. We would be bouncing off Frostproof. Frostproof has the block party thing once every quarter.
Is it downtown?
We would, yes, on a side street.
Okay.
And we would be bouncing off that. So if they had theirs this month, ours would be the next month and then Sebring's is the month after that.
Yeah.
So we would basically insert, be inserting ourselves into the schedule is what we're doing.
Sure. I mean, I'm sure if you're closing down Main Street once a month, you're probably gonna get some pushback there, you know? Because that is the most traversed road that we have. But being on a side street, I could definitely see that working a whole lot better. Lake Avenue, of all the side streets, is probably the most well-traveled. So as long as the businesses that are there are okay with it, I mean, I could see it working.
I mean, we would be talking about like South Lake between Maine and, say, Pine.
Right.
Was that, that one block or something?
Yeah. And you've only got.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we definitely wouldn't even be going down toward, going down any further toward the Middle School for sure.
And of those businesses that are there, I think the only one that would be open during that time would probably be the ice cream shop.
Right.
The rest of them are probably closed at five o'clock.
I believe, I don't have my notes in front of me. We took off out of the house in a hurry, but Carrie and Lacy are the ones heading this up and they wanted to do this from five PM to nine PM, no, six PM to nine PM, the last Friday of each month, unless there's another event that prevents us from doing it. That's why we don't want to, you know, put the name, I mean, the, which Friday it is in the title. And then the one where we do at the block party every quarter would be from seven PM to eleven PM. So that one would be, like I said, geared more towards the whole social event thing than it would be the, the vendors and the eating and the dining and that sort of thing.
Sure.
So that one would be different hours.
Would you adjust the hours when daylight savings time came along too?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And also, another thing to consider too is December and January is probably not the best months to have something like that. We would have to coincide our schedule with whatever's going on. People have family events for Christmas, Thanksgiving, that sort of thing. We don't want to interfere with that.
Sure.
So like for November, if we did it at all, it would be in the earlier part of the month. In December, I'm, Shane and I both are leaning towards trying to convince the board that December is just like a month that we just don't do anything.
Yep.
Also, the chamber has showed an interest in wanting to participate in doing this. Also, the chamber has showed an interest in wanting to participate in doing this. And she was actually hoping to partner with this, but we already had listed it, you know, planned out and all that good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But she has decided to participate with us and so she's gonna try to do some, if it's approved.
Okay. Yeah, on South Lake there, you've got two public parking lots that are close enough to actually use. Uh, and then the biggest parking lot would be, um, you know, DevTech or GeoDe, or not GeoDe, but DevTech and, uh, the other ones. Same family, different company, Avanti. Um, so, you know, if, if people like that are, are all for it, then, you know, I, I could definitely see it working. So I, my first course of action for you guys would be to table it, go talk to them, get a list of all the businesses that are there, talk to them, see how they feel about it, you know? If, if you get a majority that says no, then that would be my recommendation as well. But if you get, you know, seventy-five percent say yes, then you might have something.
Okay, would we need to get this in writing so that we can present it to the city council too?
I mean, if I were you, I would.
Okay.
You know, for sure. But, and like, again, that's just, that's just me, so what does everybody else say?
Well, I know when, when, the very first year I moved here, I don't remember what the event was, but I remember it was on that South Lake Avenue section, right, exactly what you're talking about. And I thought it was exactly perfect because it didn't really stop the traffic on Main Street itself. And there is plenty of parking around here for people to walk over there and walk back and so on and so forth. And so, you know, my only concern would maybe be how late that they play the, play the music because I do know that sometimes the music on Donaldson Park, they're playing past eleven o'clock and I, I can just, I can definitely hear it six blocks away. So I would, uh, maybe be more considerate, maybe stop it at ten or something. But other than that, I think that's a great starting place. I think that South, South Lake Avenue is perfect. And I think in that way, like you said, you get your feet wet, check it out, see how it goes and then just move forward as, as you feel necessary.
Okay.
And, yeah, whenever you're talking to them too, I mean, you can tell them about the entire event. You know, pitch the event to them the same way that you just pitched it to us. And then if they're all for it, say, show up at the next meeting and, you know, advocate for it as well. And you'll, you'll know within the first twenty minutes of doing this whether or not it's gonna happen, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I, I think that if you get any kind of friction from them, they're not interested, I would continue to move with the event, except maybe try to move it to another location.
Right.
Okay. Our Plan C was actually either Donaldson Park or Museum Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it takes away from our mission.
Yeah.
Which is to get, um, businesses, things to pick up downtown. We're trying to shake up downtown and get it woke up and draw more businesses in, desiring to be down there, that sort of thing. But at least we would be able to have the event and then maybe in time, something could change and we could, you know, go back to Plan A or Plan B. But that was our Plan C, was either Donaldson Park or Museum Avenue.
Yeah.
Um, probably Donaldson Park. Like I said, I don't want people to get confused about events that are happening at the, um, the museum, that sort of thing.
Honestly, I don't think they would. I, I don't think they would. Personally, I, I mean, I don't know if everybody else thinks that, but the art events are mostly during the day. This is gonna be at night.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I kinda feel like they'd be able to tell the difference.
That would be another thing, we'd have to talk to Gamin and the folks at the library and if, if we had to go with Plan C. So, um, obviously Plan A is out. And I had a feeling that would be a strain to, to ask for Main Street because I know that when you're asking DOT to shut down roads, you gotta have a good reason for it. I know that. But that was why we came up with Plan B and Plan C. Um, we're hoping that one day, maybe if things move forward with the changes that everybody's been discussing, that maybe we can do something like that on Main Street. But for now, we are happy with where the city can let us be.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a monthly event and they keep growing in popularity and get bigger and bigger and bigger, then for your, maybe your quarterly or once a year or by, you know, your larger of the events could be, you know, in the Main Street. We've had plenty of events in Main Street before where we shut it down and it works just fine so long as you have your security. It's all, you know, very well ran. It's just that we did, we had an event, um, the Rotary used to put it on, it was Music on the Mall. And people loved it, but it went on for two years and it was, I think, every other month or every month or six months out of the year or something like that. And people just kinda got tired of it because every single time it was in that same spot. But if they had a once a year event, it would've been better on Main Street. It's just that you get so much flack for have, for shutting down the road that everybody traverses every single day coming home from work that it has to be a really special event for them to not get tired of it, you know?
I understand.
So.
That's, that's one reason we didn't go, I didn't wanna go on the north side of Lake Avenue. North side of Lake Avenue, uh, Lake Avenue out to the truck route is probably ten times as busy as.
Right.
South Lake.
Yeah. Yeah, and.
Just growing up at Avon Park and just know the traffic flow.
That little spot of South Lake Avenue, I really think could work for you so long as the businesses that are there are for it. Cause there, there's really no housing there, so you're not really gonna have the late issue too much. It's pretty much all parking lot just on the other side of those buildings. It lends itself, the, the, the restaurants that Main Street does have are right there within walking distance, so it seems like a pretty good spot to me.
If we get the support from the local businesses and we are able to move forward, that sort of thing, um, is this something that the city would close down like this, what is that, Pine Street? The side roads and then put the cones upwards in front of where, so people don't try to clear off into Main Street from Lake Avenue?
That, that would all be part of the request. It's, um, you know, obviously the easier that you make it for the city, the more chance you have of getting it. So if you have your own security and you have your own MOT and all that kinda stuff, then that's definitely gonna help. And by MOT, I mean the people that put out the cones and everything.
Okay.
And a big draw to the local businesses is if you are limiting outsiders from coming in. So those, those outside vendors from different places and things like that, I think that would be a big draw for, not just the restaurants on Main Street, but, you know, some of the other businesses may wanna stay open as well.
Yes.
Longer, as long as they know that there's not gonna be a street full of outside vendors that are gonna take away from, from their business, in other words.
Right.
That was the general consensus when we were thinking about, you know, food trucks, so we can get an ice cream, um, like funnel cakes or something like that, but not dinner foods because the whole idea is to get people wanting to come down and go to the diners and the restaurants that are downtown. And, but if there's ever a time that, you know, that, we could have like, maybe when it's the block party, we could have a, a food truck or something down there, you know, supplementing something the restaurants don't have.
Right.
But we don't want redundancy that's gonna take the business away from downtown. That defeats the whole purpose of why we need to do this.
Yeah, eventually you get so many businesses in the area that this happens every single Friday night on its own because there's just that many people that come to that area, which is, you know, the ultimate goal. You don't have to have a special event and have a bunch of people there, they're just already there. So, which is why we're talking to these kind of folks over here about changing Main Street some, so.
And you may wanna consider mixing in live music as well, kinda like the Rotary did before.
Yep.
Not, not use a DJ every time, but maybe switch it up a little bit.
Starting off with a DJ because we have amazing support from DJ Jeremy.
Hmm.
And, um, he was gonna help us get started, but the, the idea is over time, we wanna start doing a theme. Each month, it would be a theme, uh, there would be like a, this is to sponsor like the movie viewing for the kids. Um, there would be, um, I don't know if we have to do a license for that or not, I have to research all that stuff, but there would be like an eighties theme or there would be a nineties theme, maybe a decade type thing or it would be a Christmas theme or a pajama theme. It's just gonna be something different. And we would like to get where we have bands that are adjusted accordingly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, but in the beginning, it's gonna be hard to do that because we have to start getting, um, donations and sponsorships and participation so that we can pay bands.
Yep. I get it. It could be great. See if you get the support for it.
Let's see, yes, um, it'll, we would start off slow, making sure that we can keep up with everything.
Yep.
And it doesn't get out of hand.
Mm-hmm.
Understood. All right, uh, so at this point, we'll be looking for a motion to table indefinitely and you guys will get back to us whenever you get everything together and you feel confident that you can schedule it with the city staff and we'll get you back on.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion to table indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight, we have a presentation by Renaissance Planning. Stephen Johnson. Who would like to take the lead here?
Uh, good afternoon, my name's Kyle Purvis. I am the D1 Systems Planning Administrator here at Barto headquarters. So we're here today, um, we have Stephen Johnson, he's a consultant representative for us on this project. And in the back, we also have Frank Kilpakis and Nick Leone. We're available for answers after the presentation.
Okay.
Um, what we wanna talk about today is just sort of some of the findings we've found in the initial, uh, public, uh, public meeting we had with the community to get their ideas and concerns on, uh, the future of Main Street. Uh, we put together some concepts, some of which may be able to be incorporated into the lane resurfacing project, the upcoming lane resurfacing project. And then we also have some more for the farther out alternatives, more of a visiting style sort of approach to what the future of Main Street can be, should be, what y'all wanna see it, um, how y'all wanna develop it and things of that nature.
Okay.
So with that, keep in mind, we will be asking for like a future, uh, resolution of support. Not today, that'll probably be the next meeting. So as Stephen goes over the presentation and the findings, uh, keep that in mind for any questions uh, that you would like to ask for possibly that future, uh, resolution. With that, I'll turn it over to Stephen so he can give you the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction, Kyle. Thank you, councilmembers. I'll try to be quick, uh, I know that you, we are not the last item on your agenda. Uh, but as I'm moving through, if you see anything that you have a question about or you'd like me to slow down, please don't hesitate to, uh, interrupt. Um, so like Kyle mentioned, I'm here, I wanna accomplish three things today. I wanna tell you about the things we've been working on since we were here in March for our community workshop. I wanna tee us up for our event tomorrow, our public information meeting, which will be at the Hotel Jacaranda from four to five thirty. And then I'd like to set expectations for the support that we're looking for from the city council and from the city manager and his staff to get this project across the finish line.
Okay.
So I know this will be a review for some of you, but just for the sake of the public, I'll move through this quickly. Our project purpose was to look at State Road seventeen between US twenty-seven and Delaney Avenue, that's Main Street to Avon Park. Uh, we wanna look at some different street improvements that we could make to improve the way that Main Street is serving residents of Avon Park. And this is in the context of an upcoming three R projects. That's, uh, resurfacing, restoration and rehabilitation. So they're coming through, they're gonna mill the street, they're gonna put down new pavement. And so this is a really good opportunity for us to work together with the community to see if there are any changes or improvements that we can make. Now, as we're working with the community and learning about the community's vision, as Kyle mentioned, some of those elements that the community identifies will fit within the context of a three R project and some will need to be saved for future projects. So that'll be something to keep in mind as we move forward with the presentation. Here's Main Street, I don't need to tell any, anybody here, you are all familiar with this. Um, here's the larger three R project, so the entire length of State Road seventeen will be resurfaced, Main Street being just the northernmost section there. Our approach with this project was to do an engagement approach and a technical approach simultaneously. So at the same time that we've been working with the community and the residents, we've had a team of traffic and safety engineers examining each of these alternatives so that when we get to the finish line, we've got buy-in from everybody, the community as well as the engineers. We've been on a very tight timeline for this project. As you can see, we're in our final month, so we do need to get this project wrapped up this month. And we've got three big events, our public information meeting, our council presentation, and then we'll be coming back at the end of this month, uh, for the council meeting on the twenty-second to get a, a resolution of support. So we were last here in March, March twenty-third, we held our community workshop at the Hotel Jacaranda. Uh, thanks to the city manager and his team's support, we had some really great turnout. We had over thirty participants, including local government staff, community members and stakeholders. We began the workshop with, uh, community stories video. So a member of the Renaissance team came to Avon Park, interviewed some of the city staff, some of the elected officials and some of the community members and put together, uh, a video, a ten-minute video that starts to tell the story of Main Street and the story of Avon Park. And that was really helpful for galvanizing our attendees and helping people get in the mindset of participating and, and lending their ideas. Then we went through a series of exercises to identify what are the issues that residents of Avon Park are facing and what are the, some of the solutions that we might use or some of the opportunities we might pursue in order to improve Main Street. We ended with a prioritization of the issues that had been identified. So this is a very quick recap of some of the things that we heard from the community, traffic being a major concern, particularly truck traffic. And with the unique configuration of Main Street being the, the two one-way pairs with a very wide median, that presents some additional challenges. Parking, the availability and safety of parking was another major concern as well as speeds and pedestrian and bicycle safety considerations, street lighting and drainage for Lake Verona. We also asked residents for some of their input on the opportunities that they saw to address some of these questions and there were a lot of ideas. Uh, lane reductions, a lot of safety features, road, road changes to slow speeds, calm traffic, improve connections to bike network, enhance street lighting, add more parking or explore new types of parking, crosswalks, wider sidewalks. There's a lot of discussion of event space on the mall, as we just heard from our last speaker. A lot of creative ideas about how to slow down traffic, speed bumps and roundabouts. And then things that we can do to help activate the street, improving signage, having more outdoor space, gateway features, et cetera. And in terms of our prioritization, I, I won't go through every item here, but parking, lighting, trucks and pedestrian safety, I think were some of our highest priority issues identified by the residents. In summary, uh, this is what we heard from the community. That the residents of Avon Park are envisioning a future where downtown Main Street is a destination for locals and visitors. That streets are designed to lower traffic speeds, create a safe and pleasant pedestrian and bicycle experience, that the experience is enhanced through street lighting, gateway treatments, signage and planters, that there's an adequate supply of safe parking and that large trucks and other disruptive through traffic are directed to alternative streets. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't pause there and ask the council, does that sound right? Is there anything that we missed?
That sums it up pretty well.
Great. Moving on. So we've established this vision and it's a great vision. But there are some limitations that we have to be mindful of. When we think about the solutions that we might pursue to bring this vision about, they range in complexity and cost. From, from where we are today, as Kyle mentioned, there are some things that will fall within the purview of a three R project and some that won't. So this three R project really is gonna be our first step, moving Avon Park towards that vision. So we want us, the city council to start thinking about a phased approach, this, three R is the first step. And there are a couple of benefits to this. It will give ti, residents time to get used to changes on Main Street. It'll give us a chance to implement less expensive solutions, see how they work before we make a major investment like moving curbs. And then there'll be a longer time horizon over which to pursue different funding opportunities in order to bring this vision into reality. So it's a little tricky to see here, but this three R project is gonna be our first step and there'll be opportunities for future projects. In terms of the elements that will fall inside of a three R project, we're looking at the resurfacing, of course, restriping. That provides an opportunity to do some lane repurposing and then also the, uh, installation of new crosswalks. Some of the other features that we heard from the community that are gonna be much more difficult to include in a three R would be things like curb modifications, separated bike lanes, um, special roadway treatment, street lighting, those kinds of things. So from our community workshop, we took all of this input back. Our team has planning experts, traffic engineering and safety experts, roadway design experts, and we started to lay out what are some initial concepts of what Main Street might look like. The first thing we did was we broke Main Street down into three zones based on some of the characteristics that we were seeing. So zone one, this is our first block, uh, the US twenty-seven approach, US twenty-seven to South Anoka Avenue. So the traffic flow is a little unusual here, our westbound lane is splitting. Um, the character of the, the land development is also a little bit different. This is where we have some of our largest street fronting parking lots and there's some pretty big building setbacks. As we move into zone two, we've got a mixture of uses here. There are a good number of buildings that are fronting the street, particularly on the south, south side of Main Street, uh, but densities are relatively low. And our, our medians, the mall here, has no walking infrastructure. And then zone three is our historic Main Street, this is where we see the highest levels of density. We've got all of our buildings fronting the street, most of our parking is in the rear. Uh, and this is where we have all of our walking infrastructure in the median. So these were some of the characteristics of these zones that we identified that were gonna help us to define our alternatives. So we've identified a couple of different alternatives, I'm gonna start with zone three since that's the most complicated. Our first, of course, is a no build, we can leave it the way it is. Our second option is to explore a buffered bike lane. So we wanted to create some more bicycle and pedestrian safety opportunities. We heard a, a desire for exploring a reduction from four lanes to two. And this would allow us to combine bike infrastructure with parallel parking. Now, there are some challenges with this approach. Because of the existing bulbouts in the historic part of Main Street, we can't put the, um, bicycle lane right next to the sidewalk, which is where we would ideally like it to be. But the cost of moving those bulbouts is gonna be too high. So we've compromised by leaving the parallel parking where it is, where you see it today on historic Main Street and adding a, uh, bicycle lane between the parallel parking and the remaining through lane. Our third alternative in historic Main Street is the introduction of angled parking. Uh, this has the advantage of working just fine with the existing bulbouts. It also increases the quantity of parking spaces that would be available in that part of Main Street. Unfortunately, uh, because angled parking does take up more room, there would not be an opportunity to have a bicycle lane in the main thoroughfare. Um, there could be opportunities to expand the existing sidewalk infrastructure in the mall to be a more robust multimodal path, but that would not be part of the three R project. So those are the three alternatives we've identified for zone three. Moving from zone three to zone two, uh, we, again, we have a no build alternative and then our second alternative in zone two is essentially the same as our, uh, alternative two in zone three. So we're adding a bike. So we're adding a bike lane, we're keeping parallel parking, and then our traffic engineers have studied the intersections and identified which intersections would benefit from dedicated left or right turn lanes. So there'll be a mix of left, right turn lanes and parallel parking along with bicycle lane in Zone 2. In Zone 1, we wanted to maintain that bicycle infrastructure all the way through if we could. Unfortunately, the westbound slip lane that turns north on US-27 is too narrow to accommodate a bike lane and a through lane. So we are eliminating the bike lane from the westbound direction on Zone 1, that block. We are keeping it on the south side, which is the eastbound direction, in part because there is a keyhole bike lane on the west side of US-27 on State Route 64. So we wanted to connect those pieces of bicycle infrastructure. So to demonstrate some of what I've been describing, we've got these diagrams. We call these typical sections. So this would typify how the right-of-way would be divided within each of these zones. So here are existing conditions. I think most people here are familiar with this. We've got two drivelanes, parallel parking, and then our sidewalk and utility infrastructure. Here is our Alternative 2 that I was describing a moment ago, where we've placed a bike lane in between our driveline and our parking lane. And then our third example is the incorporation of angled parking into historic Main Street. We would like to make a recommendation that the city consider reverse angled parking. So this is angled parking where you'll actually drive slightly past the parking space, go into reverse, and then back into the parking space. We recognize that this is an unfamiliar parking maneuver for many people, so there might be a short-term cost of some training, some adjustment to get used to how to enter this type of parking space. However, there are some very pronounced safety benefits. It's much easier for drivers to see oncoming traffic as they're leaving the parking space. And there are also some minor benefits, like it's easier to load and unload your truck and when passengers get out of the vehicle, they'll be getting out towards the sidewalk rather than towards moving traffic, which can be particularly helpful with children. But the main benefit is the safety benefit. And if you contrast these two pictures, the photo on the left, as you're driving down the road, none of those drivers in those parked cars can see the traffic. And if you contrast that with the image on the right, you can see into every one of those driver seat windows, which means those drivers are going to be able to see you as they're trying to leave the parking space. Moving on to Zone 2, we've got our existing conditions, a driveline, turn lane, and parking lane. And once again, we're recommending the addition of a bike lane in place of one of the driving lanes. So this would reduce the number of through lanes from four to two. Now, in this case, because we have no bulbouts in this part of Main Street, we are able to place that sidewalk, or that bike lane directly adjacent to the sidewalk, which is going to create less conflict points as drivers are moving in and out of the parking Finally, in Zone 1, again, we've got two drivelanes. One is particularly wide, the outside lane is 18 feet, and we are proposing that we reallocate on the eastbound side some of that footage for a bike lane, to have a continuous eastbound bike lane all the way through Main Street. On the westbound side, we will still have the opportunity to have some parallel parking spaces on the east side of that block. In addition, there are some other design features that could be included in any of these alternatives. Now, as I mentioned, not all of these could be included in the 3R project, but none of the alternatives that you choose would preclude any of these other benefits, like new gateway features, crosswalks, enhanced lighting, et cetera. There's another concept that we've tried to leverage in our design concepts, and that's the idea of a chicane. So a chicane road is one that weave side to side, and that's a helpful strategy for slowing down and calming traffic, which was an objective we heard from many of the members of the community. So in parts of our corridor, we've tried to alternate left turn lanes and parallel parking lanes, as you can see in this diagram, and that causes the through lane to chicane. And so cars will need to slow down as they're moving side to side, block to block. And this is also possible with an angled parking configuration. But as mentioned, there's no room for a bike path, so that would need to take place in the mall. Here is an example from our engineering diagrams that show that chicane in action. So if we look at the eastbound direction, you can see the through lane is on the left, the parallel parking is on the right. The through lane slides over, then we get a left turn lane at the intersection, and then at the next block, that through lane shifts back to the left. So that's one of the ways that we're hoping to slow and calm traffic on Main Street. So we do have those full engineering diagrams. This is a challenging forum to present them. We can give it a try. This would give us an opportunity to look at the full length of Main Street. We will be presenting these tomorrow at our public information meeting and rolling out some 12-foot maps. That might be a better place, but I'll leave that up to the council.
Okay. I guess I would ask you, what exactly are you looking for from the council tonight?
Great question. We would love to have your involvement at our public information meeting tomorrow. We are also coming back two weeks from today. At that time, we would like to ask for a motion of support behind one of these alternatives. Now, as I mentioned, we need to finish this project by the end of the month. So we would like to make ourselves available tonight, tomorrow, and over the next two weeks in whatever way city council and the city manager need, so that when we come back on the 22nd, all of the questions have already been answered. If we could be on the consent agenda, I think that would be a good goal to shoot for. And we're ready to engage with the council in whatever way we need in order to accomplish that.
Okay. So obviously, there wouldn't be enough time for the council to get together and decide what we wanted to support before the 22nd meeting, unless we had a special meeting. But by all means, I think it would definitely be a good idea for as many council members as can attend the meeting tomorrow to attend. It just, obviously, there's a lot of information here, and there's a lot of ways to dissect this, for sure. Would you like to hear comments back from us tonight? Or would it be better for us to formulate our plans and try and maybe have a special meeting for the council to decide what we're looking for?
I would love to hear what comments or questions you have tonight.
Okay.
And any that aren't answered, or any you think of tonight, you can come join us at the information meeting tomorrow.
Okay. On the chicane concept, obviously, that's something that you guys came up with. I've started to see it in some of the newer development areas. Have you seen an uptick in crashes associated with that? Or how has the traffic flow typically been when that chicane is implemented?
For that question, I may need to defer to my traffic engineering specialist.
Okay.
Can you help us with that? No, I have it in the research that I've done, and just understanding the design. It's a safer concept. It's going to take a little bit. The key is it's going to calm traffic down. And once people get familiar with that and kind of understand, you know, the road, it's going to be a much safer concept.
It seems that it might be good to implement that in an area where, let's say, we have, we stick with what we have through, let's say, Zone 1 and part of Zone 2, and then as you're transitioning into a different area, that kind of makes a good transition. Is that kind of the way you would implement that? Just to help slow down the traffic before you get into a different zone?
Yeah, yeah. We would, I mean, just by reducing the lanes, I mean, taking, removing a lane, that's going to calm traffic down. And because they're slowing down, it's not going to be confusing, I don't think, if that's what you're, it'll be easily delineated, I mean, really delineated and easily understood on how to navigate it.
Sure.
And once you've driven through the corridor once or twice, it's going to be really, really simple.
Okay. On Zone 2 specifically, do we have, I know we have some parallel parking in Zone 2. Is the entire thing parallel parking currently through Zone 2?
I don't believe it's, we're putting parallel parking where we can. But there's not, you know, there will be areas where we won't have parallel parking, just because we have a turn lane where we need it. Or if we're, you know, the same thing, if there's a left turn lane, there'll be a chicane, and then so there won't be parking, the parallel parking there.
Sure.
But we're putting it where we can.
Okay, and it sounds like basically nothing could be done on the median with the 3R project. That would be strictly for future?
That would have to be a separate project.
Okay.
Based on the funding that we have available.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I would definitely say that, without getting into the nitty-gritty details, but adding the bike lane in Zone 1, we have that exceptionally wide lane there. Nobody knows why it exists. I'm sure it existed for a purpose at some point, but nobody knows why now. So adding a bike lane in the outside lane there would definitely be good. I could see how having, keeping with the two lanes off and on to Highway 27 probably would be more beneficial, just from the amount of traffic that goes in and out there. But as we move into Zone 2, I'm not sure exactly where, but somewhere in Zone 2, it definitely needs to start restricting and possibly do some chicane maneuvers to at least maximize how much parallel parking we have, if not, start adding the angled parking in some of those areas where we can. And then by the time you get to Zone 3, it's all angled parking, if possible. Yeah.
Okay, that's a good comment.
That would be the best way that I could see to make it flow.
Yeah. So we felt in this first kind of design that the angled parking in the downtown core was key.
Yeah.
And so even, you know, you can even use the center trail that you have in the middle. A bicyclist could use that.
Sure.
And we're going to have a crosswalk where they can navigate to the bicycle lane. We used parallel parking initially in Zone 2, partly because of the uses that you have there, and thinking about the need for parking currently, and the provision of a bicycle lane. So if we were going to use angled parking there, we'd probably have to remove the bicycle lane. So that's the, we're thinking about how do we get bicyclists through the corridor safely, as well as provide as much parking as we could.
Yeah.
So that was going into the decision there.
So ideally, go ahead.
Well, in Zone 1, the reason that we took the bicycle, the westbound bicycle lane out, is because it needs to cross the traffic. You need to continue it across the intersection, US-27. You'd need to cross the turn lane as well, which brings some kind of safety factors, and it can be done. And there's not a lot of right-of-way right there to put it on the right turn lane. And so we proposed putting a good designated crosswalk for the cyclists, so that they can get to the side block for that last block. And then they, there is a crossing on 27 that they can use to get to the bicycle lane. We thought that was a safer movement for bicyclists.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have a question for you. What's your name, sir?
Frank Kalpakas.
Mr. Frank, were you here when Avon Park, Main Street was parallel parking?
It's parallel parking now.
I'm sorry, not parallel parking.
Angle parking?
Angle parking.
No, but I did have the pleasure of seeing the old photos.
Okay. Was there any study done of why it was changed?
I don't know, honestly, but I suspect it was to widen the road. And they felt that having four lanes, instead of parking, it's a pros and cons, that they remove the parking and put the other lane in. But I don't know that for sure.
Okay. So if it was done to widen the road, and now we're doing it to narrow, meaning we're taking two lanes, I'm trying to understand the purpose. Back in the 60s and the 70s and the 80s, there was more businesses down on Main Street. Everybody went to Main Street. There was no 27.
Yeah.
So I could understand why it was that way. I can understand. There was no 27. People that grew up in Avon Park, they can remember that. There was no 27. Main Street was shopping. So if you think it was done to narrow the roads, and we got less shopping now, why are we doing it now?
Okay. So it's really interesting. It's really interesting. We've done things in the past, communities across the country have done things in the past, really to solve for one objective, and it's really how do we get cars through a corridor? In many communities, it has really impacted the vibrancy of their downtown, the walkability of the downtown, access to businesses, creating an energy on the street. And so you see a lot of communities around the country now that are really repurposing the streets to meet these multiple objectives. How do we create safe streets where, with alt modes available, where people can walk safely, comfortably, where motorists can get through the corridor efficiently, calm the traffic a little bit, and then people are on the streets, and it just creates, creates a thinking, just a vibrancy on the streets that also helps economic development and the decision for businesses to locate in that area. It just creates an energy. And so you see communities across the country now that are doing the same sort of thing.
Okay. And the young man spoke of the backing in the vehicles, and he said that you guys recommended that?
Yes.
You do know we have a lot of elderly here in the community, right?
It's going to be a balance, for sure. And this is a decision that will, it's a tough decision, but it is a safer, it is a safer maneuver.
Maybe for me and you.
No, understood, understood. No, that has to be entered into the equation. You know, being able to back into the spot safely. But if you think about, you still need to back out as well.
Right.
And there's cars, you know, there's traffic on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and if you're not seeing the traffic, it can create incidents as well.
Right, sir. I get the part pulling out is easy. You can see left and right. I get that. It's easier to pull out. I'm more concerned than backing in. Have you seen the elderly on Main Street driving?
No, but I can imagine.
Okay. And my last question is, was there some type of study done on speed on Avon Park, Main Street, within the last year or two?
I'm not aware of, I mean, we've, I'm not aware of a speed study that's been done.
Okay. That's it.
But you did do traffic, right? Traffic studies?
Yes, and we've done a traffic study and a safety study. You know, looking at the number of fatalities and the causes of crashes and fatalities and the causes of the crashes.
And all of that information was presented at the community meeting as well, which I believe you attended.
Yeah.
Ms. Taylor?
I did. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, as far as the back end, I mean, I feel like that's a whole lot easier than the parallel parking is right now.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of individuals never even learned how to parallel park.
If you have to back anywhere, it would be better to back into a place where nothing is moving versus backing into a road where traffic is moving.
Right.
So I certainly see the wisdom there.
Or having to back in, pull out, back in, pull out, to get your car in the spot.
Sure.
And, you know, the newer cars now have the back-end feature where you can see it. That makes it a little bit easier.
Okay. Other questions?
I have none for now.
Go ahead.
No, I don't have any right now.
No, I mean, I feel like it's exciting. I think it's, so we can, just to be clear, Zone, whatever we pick in Zone 1, 2, and 3, any of these combinations would fit together?
Yes, they would fit together.
Okay. As far as finding funding for the future growth there, kind of a paramount feature of in Zone 3 of this angled parking is to have that wider multi-use path on Main Street. What do you see as the likelihood of getting some DOT funding for that? Mr. DOT himself?
Kyle Purvis. So another benefit of having the resolution of support would be for future projects of this nature. So whenever we have a community that has a clear vision and a resolution of support from the community and the council, it gives us a better planning opportunity to get projects like that in L. planning opportunity to get projects like that in, in L R T P or in some sort of future planning document. Say, you know, this is the county or city's vision of what they want to see. And it gives us planning consistency with PDNE projects if a PDNE is necessary. With that type of a multi-use bike lane, pedestrian lane, probably wouldn't need a PDNE. But the resolution of support is, is pretty vital. It's not just for what can be done in this resurfacing project. It'll also be for the communities sort of came together. This is the vision we would like to see for this resurfacing project and any potential future projects that come through this community. So it'll help our, give our designers a better idea of how to design for when there is funding available or if there is some sort of future partnership between funding splits or something like that.
Okay.
It really helps set those, sets those goals and helps us know that the community is serious about what's going on and helps prioritize projects in our work program.
Okay. Okay. One other question while I have you. So one of the odd things about downtown Avon Park is the fact that this is a state road, right? So everyone considers it as Avon Park, you know, we maintain it, that sort of thing. But it is in fact a state road. So in, I'm sure there's plenty of other towns who have a very similar situation. They have a very wide median there in the center of town. What leadway or maybe what restrictions have you seen from DOT place on towns from changing or altering the look of those medians? Has, has that really even come into effect or does DOT, so long as the road is clear, kind of give you free will to do what you want?
To be honest, y'all are really unique with this wide median going through your downtown. Just off the top of my head, I can't really think of any other places in district one that have such a median like that. I mean, it's basically like movie perfect median, you know, like I would call it.
Okay.
So we really haven't came across any situations like that in district one where a community has a extremely wide median through their thoroughfare of their downtown trying to, you know, do community events and things of that nature. So as far as restrictions, I can't really, can't really speak on that. But I mean, we can always, that's part of the design process too for projects. If y'all have any ideas or anything like that, you know, feel free to reach out to me or anybody in DOT and say, hey, you know, is this even possible in the future?
Okay.
Things like that, so.
Very good.
Those are good, good things to discuss in the public meeting tomorrow as well. That way we'll have, you know, notes of them in the future. So when we go back for future projects, we can reference those notes and say, these are some of the things that they were looking at. Is it possible? Is it not?
Okay.
Will we allow it? Will we not?
Okay.
Awesome.
Very good. I appreciate the information. Uh, so I guess one of the things that has come up is the reverse angled parking. Get a sense of the council. See, two people have spoken in favor, one person not. What does the other two council members have to say?
I have a few questions. First of all, basically, are you gonna, your, your project is to change it from a four lane to a two lane from twenty seven all the way down through Main Street to, to past the, you know, to Delaney? Okay.
With, with the exception of zone one. Zone one is basically remaining two lanes, four lanes, excuse me. Sure. Yep, okay.
Basically, I can tell you that almost everybody but one I talked to, including business people, do not want to see it go to two lane or one lane each side. They want to keep it four lanes. And for my own purpose, I, I'm mainly concerned about the traffic flow and safety. And I, I want to give you one example of safety. There is a location in zone one where there is, I think, five parallel parking spaces in a row. And early one morning, I was coming on the, from the south side by the little alley, trying to get on the Main Street. And I guess everybody decided to park at the Ridge Ark store there. And with five or six cars there, I couldn't really see traffic coming. And that was just five or six parallel. If there was angular parking, then I'd be really, really concerned. And then the other thing is, is there's a lot of people that they come down Main Street, whether they're going east or left, east or west. They, they want to turn left in order to cross over Main Street to go to the north side or the south side, depending which direction you're going. And if you turn around and you make the majority of the road from four lanes to two lanes, and then all of a sudden you're basically doubling the traffic on those lanes. Now, that, that may not seem like a lot, but when people go ahead and turn left to cross over the Main Street, there's only enough room for possibly two cars to do that. So let's just take a perfect example, like even on Lake Avenue on Main Street, where you got a red light, perfect place. Well, if you only have one lane there and they get a green light and the first two cars or two and a half cars or three cars want to turn left and go north, they're gonna block the Main Street one hundred percent. And then because the traffic is double, it's gonna back up farther on that side. And then on the other side, which would be the, the north side, because of the fact that their traffic is double, it's gonna make it more difficult for them to even cross over. So I'm very, very concerned about that. I haven't really found even businesses that really like the idea. They think that, except for one, that the angular parking also would take up more space of even blocking the face of the businesses. So I, I really worry about the safety. I worry about the traffic flow. I just think that, and overall, in my opinion, it's not a good idea. As far as backing up into angular, I've always been trained to, to back up in the parking lot. And I don't have a problem with that. But if you turn around and, and especially if you back it into it, you're gonna stop traffic as you move up. They're gonna have to stop and hopefully don't run into you and know that you're trying to try to back up into that parking space. That's gonna slow traffic down and build it up and you're gonna basically, I think, make some people not so happy. So I have a lot of concerns about safety and about traffic flow. And I, I understand that we want to slow the traffic down because sometimes we do have a lot of speeders, but I think that's more of a, you know, legal action for people to control the traffic on, on Main Street as well as it is on twenty seven where we do have a lot of speeding vehicles. And so I, I, I just have a difficult time because I have to realize, when I first moved here fifteen, sixteen years ago, we probably had about three thousand less citizens than we do now. And I think like in the next three years, we could have even three thousand more, maybe even a thousand more in the next year and a half to two years. So you're gonna have a lot more people traffic down Main Street. And so if the traffic does slow down and basically has to stop where people are trying to make these left-hand turns to cross over Main Street, what you're then gonna force to do, I believe, is force people to go down different roads. There is a couple of main roads like Pleasant and Bell and all that. But what you're gonna do is you're gonna force people to drive more into the residential roads. And I think having more traffic in the residential streets is also another situation to look at, whether that would be unsafe or not to have too many, because even some of those, those two main roads, Pleasant and Bell, some of those people really speed up on those roads. And if they turn around and go more into the residential other streets the same way, people will may, eventually will avoid Main Street unless they got a good shop down there. And then at the same time, you also got time zones like in the early more, people going to work or kids are going to school, as well as the fact you got an issue problem with our fire department. If, I mean, if they try to come out and there's a truck trying to go down Main Street and there's no pace for anybody else to get out of their way. So I for one am not sold a hundred percent on a, a two lane. I, I like to keep it a four lane. And the majority of people that I talked to has told me that, including businesses. I understand some of the reasons why we want to make changes, but I don't really think that it's in our best option, in my opinion. And actually, I would think that we probably should have a better option to have more people, citizens to come besides the meeting tomorrow. Because I think a lot of people don't know about the meeting tomorrow. You're probably limited to the amount of people that will be allowed into the jack around the room. Just the people that were there at the last meeting in March, which most, all of the city council was there and some other citizens, they filled up that room, as you know, one hundred percent. And so as that has, word has got out, there's more and more people interested. Hopefully that businesses, four o'clock may not be able to make that meeting. So I think that, I know you have a time limit here, but I think you'd be better off if we had another public meeting somewhere as larger where you had it after five o'clock where I see, and advertise it to see if citizens really wanted to come out and talk, unless they just come out and talk to us one-on-one and give us their information. But th- those are my ideas and opinions, and I, I'm not completely sold on some of your ideas. On the bike path, I have a concern. Have you thought about on a bike path about allowing EV bikes on there? Have you thought of that concern or not? Because that, those EV bikes go pretty fast. Has that been a concern when you're talking about?
Yeah, there's, there's some places and other places around the district, EV bikes and, and the bike paths, and that is a concern because they do go really fast. Right now, we're sort of trying to work out what we're allowing, what we're not allowing.
Yeah.
This is a relatively new thing. I was, I was passed the other day in Arcadia. I was going forty and an EV bike passed me.
Yeah.
So.
And a lot of times those people, and we tried the scooter thing here for a while too, they don't really pay attention to stop lines, stop signs or even traffic. They just go. So there again, like I said, my number one concern is safety. And so those are my opinions and opinions of citizens and business people I talk to. But I'm, I'm just one person up here. Obviously, we have different opinions here too, but I just wanted to share that information with you, and I really appreciate your time and effort that you all are doing.
Sure. I would like to say those are very valid concerns. A lot of concerns we've heard from other communities doing the exact same lane repurposing that we're doing here. Oh, if you like, I do have some like before and after studies of one that we did in Lakeland that you could look at with some people had the same like timing concerns and safety concerns. And it kind of just shares what we found.
So you'll be at the meeting tomorrow?
Unfortunately, I will not be. I have a meeting in Orlando, so.
Do, do you know any of the key facts of that study?
Uh, I really wasn't a part of it. I came in sort of after it was already done. Our traffic operations department handled it.
I mean, do you know overall, was it an improvement or a descent?
Oh, it was, honestly, the times, the travel delay times pretty much remained the same. Um, it was more of a personal perception that it was taking longer because everything was shrunk down rather than actual, you know, it took me two more minutes to go from A to B. In reality, it was, it increased thirty seconds and it was about a mile long as well. But I had that presentation that they shared with their city council of Lakeland. Lakeland put it together with support from F D O T. Lakeland really headed that one up themselves. We were just sorting the background, running into support, doing analysis and all those things. Uh, but they have a whole slide that they presented. If anybody from the council is interested in seeing it, I can send it.
Yeah, if you could please send it to the city manager's office so they can disseminate it to the rest of us, that'd be great.
So you can do it.
Because Jim, one important thing is remember, they also want to decrease the, you know, the big trucks and all of that kind of stuff.
The through traffic.
The through traffic. So I think they said last time it was like eight, eight percent. I don't know. That number just stuck in my head.
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight percent reduction in traffic going through. Um, and then also if they do the, the chicane concept, they do allow for left turn stor- uh, storage at those, the busiest intersections. So it might be like the best of both worlds.
Yeah, the idea is to make it not a highway. So having the four lanes, we've basically turned our Main Street into a highway. And we now have a highway. We have highway twenty seven. We have something for the larger scale businesses. So it's, it's to make it more walkable because, you know, if you walk along highway twenty seven, I can tell you, you won't last more than a few seconds because it's so loud. It's so, it's just to your normal senses, you, you don't want to be there. And to a large degree, part of Main Street also has that same problem, particularly, you know, when schools letting out or when schools going in. There, there's so much traffic and it's so loud that it just naturally makes you not want to be there. And so the idea is to try to shed as much through traffic as possible, shed as much large truck traffic as possible and make it actually inviting and feel safe. Whether it is any safer or not, you at least feel safe and you, you feel natural walking around in downtown Main Street.
I, I will say one thing that I, I did live near a small community in Alabama for a couple of years. And the downtown area was, was actually a, a side road. And it really wa, it wasn't a thoroughfare for people to go to and from residences and then mall areas and things like this. And so since it was only about four or five blocks and people never went down, it was a two lane highway, never went down those streets unless they were going just shopping to one of those businesses. So there they did have angular parking, but like I said, the traffic flow was, was really low because the only people that were going there were just going shopping. They weren't going to and from home or to and from school. But so that made big, that made a difference. And it was really nice. It was a, a nice concept and I liked it. And like I said, I had no problem backing in. I just think that we have to realize one thing is that, that we're, we're promoting growth within the city and I, I can see that the city is gonna grow tremendously this year as well as the next three to five years. And we only have two lane highway. I think you're gonna ask people to take different routes besides Main Street.
That's exactly the point, Jim. You are asking them to take different routes. That, that is the point. You want the trucks to go on the truck route and you want the people who don't have to go through Main Street or just strictly going along sixty four to not necessarily want to take, they want to take the parkways and the seventeens and the, you know, the things like that. That is the idea is to shed that traffic. If you're not meant to be going downtown, we don't want you there because, you know, you, you want to have an environment that's friendly for the people that actually want to stay there for whatever reason. So if you think about, you know, Avon Park, whenever, you know, fifty years ago, we obviously had two lanes. We had a beautiful garden downtown. It felt very good to walk there. And then the next step up was to basically turn it into a four lane because we didn't have highway twenty seven. Then as we continue to grow, now we do have highway twenty seven. So then we have more and more traffic that's now using Main Street as more of a highway than it is for a shopping thoroughfare. Then the next step above us is something more like Lakeland. And the next step above that would be like downtown Orlando, downtown Tampa. Why on earth would you ever go to downtown Orlando or downtown Tampa unless you really had to go there, you know, like? And, and that's what happens to larger towns. As you continue to grow, you end up with business parks. You end up with, you know, event areas. And the only reason you ever go there is to participate in whatever those events are. But you wouldn't dream of just driving through there for the heck of it unless you just wanted to see it.
I see your point. But I have my points.
I'm kind of a little concerned with this zone one. Because right there at the end of zone one in Anoka, this is another bad intersection that, in addition to the one he, he talked about. There's been many days when that traffic has been backed up to Lock Street just because it, it just can't, it doesn't move. There's, there's traffic coming off twenty seven that's preventing them from going across north or south. And then I see you're gonna cut your zone, your zone one and zone two right there for them to merge. So I'm wondering, what are the people that are on Anoka, how are they gonna merge onto a road that's already, or enter onto a road that's already merging? I'm just curious how that's gonna work.
That, that is a tricky zone, and that's actually one of the things that we're looking at into a little bit further as we speak.
Step up that microphone just a little bit closer.
I was gonna say, that is a tricky zone and that is one of the things that we're looking at in a little bit more detail. I think we just talked about it today as a matter of fact. Um, but trying to figure out how exactly to handle that situation is gonna be, it's gonna be one of the key areas of this whole thing.
Yeah, because I, I know there's a business owner on each of those corners. It's gonna make them, their, their customers impossible. It's already impossible for their customers to get out when the traffic is backed up down Anoka. So I, I don't know. Maybe they would think about maybe extending zone one a little bit further to the next intersection or?
Yeah.
I don't know.
In our, in our meeting tomorrow, we'll actually have the role plots laid out with the, how we plan on having it painted. And part of the meeting will be for alternative ideas of, because y'all know the traffic here better than we do. So any extra ideas that y'all have of how we could paint it or where we could send people or what we should do? I mean, this is just a preliminary starting point with y'all's input moving forward. I mean, nothing's set in stone by any means.
I, I don't think I'm a big fan of the back end parking either personally. That's just my opinion, but there's been some accidents on Main Street and I just, I drive by it and I think, how did that even happen? How, how did you smash that covert up if you're only supposed to be going thirty miles an hour? I, I just, I don't, I just don't see that being a good thing. But again, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, just, just to address some of the points, some of the concerns. So in, your point about the left turns, that we, we did, we do, we did evaluate those intersections in terms of a tracker, traffic efficiency standpoint in terms of how does that operate? And we have storage to make left turn, left turns on the, on, on Main Street. So there's storage and chicane around it. So there, there, there's, there's storage for that. And it takes, it takes the through traffic, like if, if one was And it takes, it takes the through traffic, like if one was, was going to go straight and they're behind currently today, a left turn, they're going to, they're trying to get in the right lane to get around that car that's going to take a left, which creates a unsafe kind of maneuver. So by calming the traffic down, I think that, that just the operations and the flow through the corridor will work better. It's hard to imagine, I know, but it'll just be a small delay in your travel time through the corridor. And we're evaluating this. And trucks will not, they will be deterred to other roads. They will not use, because this is going to be, it's not going to be a desirable route to use for truckers. So they'll go on the truck route that's north of here and bypass Main Street. And it'll, it'll make it safer for pedestrians and other motorists. Trucks also have operating conditions that slow traffic down. Their acceleration and deceleration speeds are very different, different characteristics than a normal car or a truck. So you, it slows traffic down as well. By introducing, you know, a certain amount of trucks in a road, it deteriorates the operating conditions in the corridor. So I think, I think if you look at it holistically, from an operational standpoint, you're not going to, you're not going to see much difference in terms of getting through the corridor, but it'll, it'll be a safer corridor.
I'm sorry.
So what route the truck's going to use?
Is it seventeen A, seventeen A North? That is a truck route coming off of twenty seven.
How much Striker in terms of the seventeen A?
Just past the high school, around on seventeen, all the way back to Striker.
All the way back to Seber?
No.
Well, no.
When they get there at the, what's that, a four-way stop sign on the other side of high school, Main Street? Where they going to go from there?
They'll probably go straight, right? They'll go straight through the four-way.
Or they going to make a left, they going to make a left going towards Seber, or they going to make a right coming toward Avon Park?
Well, it depends on where their origin and destination is. But, but the point is, if they're using seventeen as an alternative to the US twenty seven, coming down Main Street and then going down to Seber, they would make the turn further north on the designated truck route and then bypass Main Street.
Okay, if they will, because they don't now.
They don't now.
It's too convenient now.
Right. It's a highway now.
They can, they can get down Main Street pretty quick right now.
Right.
I'd like to make one more comment if I could please. I know that when we talked about the Brickell Building, that a lot of the businesses around there, behind there, were really concerned about parking, especially when they said they were going to put a fitness gym in there. And so I know that some of the businesses, especially on South Lake Avenue, as well as the ones like eighteen East and out on Main Street, were worried about, you know, them taking up too many spaces in back. And so part of the solution, I guess, was to go through angular parking. But I found out talking to the fitness gym as well as the businesses around there, basically it appears so far that most of the people using the fitness gym are using it early in the morning before the businesses opening up. So even if they are parking behind there, that by the time the businesses open up, there really hasn't been that many people back there parking. So I haven't heard any complaints from any of the businesses on Main Street by the, at the Brickell Building as well as on South Lake Avenue, the parking lot behind there. So I think they were pleasantly surprised, and I think also know the last time we had a meeting last, last week, late, you know, it was almost seven o'clock, I guess, there was a lot of people parking on Main Street because that's when they were using the fitness gym after five or six o'clock. So I don't really see it necessary why we even would necessarily need an angular parking for extra parking as well as the fact we do have a lot behind there that we, that we could actually add a parking lot that the, somebody donated a piece of property to us. And I know the people at the fitness gym said they'd be interested in having that parking lot, and that would be for people just using the gym if it got to be overcrowded. So there, there's a lot of good things and bad things that everything we look at. And I think it's just a matter of opinion that not only our opinions that count, but also the citizens and the people that we listen to and talk to every day. So I appreciate all the time and effort you do, and I think that whichever way it works out, whichever way this council votes, and I hope the city works out in their best interest, and I thank you for your time again.
Well, I'll just simply say that, you know, you're talking about one business of hopefully hundreds. But the point here was to slow down the traffic more than anything. Because again, you're trying to make it a safe place for pedestrians, not just adding more parking. By taking down one lane, that is the key to slowing down the traffic. The byproduct is that you now have all this space, and what are you going to do with it? You can make it a bike lane, do a lot of different things, but adding the angled parking solves a lot of our issues. You've been sitting here for enough years to know that parking is an issue downtown at different times, particularly whenever you have events, or if we actually had all of our buildings on Main Street, actually were occupied with businesses that were functioning, retail type businesses, you would have a problem with parking. So I think it's absolutely paramount that we do add as much parking as we possibly can. And I wouldn't leave it so short sighted as just think about one particular building or one particular business. And furthermore, talking to residents, I'm not sure exactly who you're talking to because I've had ninety-nine percent of the people that I've spoken to, particularly businesses, they're very much in favor of it. So and that's been that way from the beginning through this whole process.
And Mayor, everybody that sat at my table at the meeting at the Jacko Random was against it. Here's my thing. I'm going to just say this, Mayor, and I'm going to be done with it. I heard you say the reason was to direct traffic away from Main Street. Did I get that correct?
Direct through traffic away from?
Through traffic. If I was a business, I would be offended by that. If I had a business down there on Main Street, I would want traffic to come through there to visit my business.
I think he's talking about big trucks. Big trucks don't come and visit a business.
You're talking about people who have no intention of stopping on Main Street at all is the idea.
Well, it just don't make sense to me that.
My, my whole thing is, is, you know, Ms. Eason and her husband and Kamla and different, different organizations want to bring all of these festivals down to Main Street and all those kinds of things. I feel like if traffic were to slow down and there was additional parking spaces, because anybody who went to the Blueberry Festival realizes you had to park blocks away because there was no parking right there where Donaldson Park is and where the festivals are. So if our goal, which I thought it was based on previous conversations, is to get more involvement downtown, more festivals, more businesses, I feel like this would be one of those ways to do that. And I think it's hard to imagine just because it is so different, what it's, what it would look like down to two lanes. But that we did have that before, and I feel like it encouraged a lot more individuals. I mean, I know I have four kids, and I'm not going to let my six-year-old, we're not going to walk down Main Street as busy as it is, as loud as it is. Most of the time, I'm not even going to take the time to parallel park on Main Street because I know I'm going to have to make a mad dash out my door, get all four of my kids out, jump back in the car, and it's, as a parent to me, it's scary at this point. So if I don't have a parking spot down one of the side roads or on the back, I just keep going. So I feel like if we want it to be more of a destination, which is what my goal was, a destination to go down there and spend the day and spend time with your family and walk Main Street, I feel like slower traffic as a mom is extremely important.
And I agree with all you just said, every bit of. The only problem is there's little, there's little areas that I'm not comfortable with. And that's the speeding. Nothing against the Sheriff Department, but I just don't think they're doing their job on Main Street. We go through Main Street all the time. I mean, they just flying down Main Street.
Yeah, which is why we want to slow it down.
So that's one of, that's one of my biggest concern. Now we, now we got a one lane.
But that, this is how you slow it down, is because you cannot go fast if there's a car in front of you.
And there's no passing.
Let me say that again. You cannot go fast if there is a car in front of you.
No, they just chew up the back of your bumper to force you down the road.
I hear what you're saying, Mayor.
You're going to get in an accident?
I'm just saying, I've seen people.
No, you, you, no. You're living in a fantasy right now.
Opposite side of the road, elderly woman. She had to at least be in her eighties. She stopped in the middle of the road to go in the medium. I stopped because it just surprised me. I'm looking, and she over there smelling some bush or whatever. Got back in her car, stopped in the middle of the road. Of course, it was about eight or nine o'clock at night, but I saw this, and I'm like, are you serious?
I'm pretty sure she's going to do that regardless.
Bush and got back in the road as if it was okay to do.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, remember I said there are certain issues I'm concerned about, speeding? And definitely the elderly, because they still seventy-eight, eighty years old, they still think they know how to drive. I don't mean no harm, you know?
That's why it's safer for everyone to go slower.
It, it, that'll work if everybody do that.
They don't have a choice if there's cars in front of them.
Everybody do it.
I just want to make one final comment, and I'm not trying to be argumental, so please apologize upfront. But the biggest event of the year that this city has is the Christmas parade. I think we all agree with that. And basically, Main Street is just lined up with people and their chairs, standing room only, and there doesn't, and the Main Street is blocked off one hundred percent. And evidently, there's not a problem with parking because all these thousands of people are out there for the parade. So they must be finding parking close enough to walk, to come and either stand or sit on Main Street or the mall area to watch the parade. So just something to think about that maybe part, parking is available more than we thought. And that's my last word for tonight, and I'm done.
Okay. There you have it. Good luck.
So just to recap, the meeting is tomorrow night at four.
Correct.
At four, four to five there.
Okay. All right. You don't need us to be there, right?
It's nice to hear what everybody else has to say though.
All right. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just about to do the minutes. All right, item number nine, we have the minutes from April twenty fourth. This will be from the regular city council meeting. Be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number nine, the minutes for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three, please.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Should I wait for Councilmember McCure?
No, you can continue.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
All right. Item number ten, this will be the first reading for ordinance zero four dash twenty twenty-three.
So ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code, specifically amending section two point oh five point oh two regarding regulations for boat slips slash ramps, docks, boathouses and fishing piers, and removing requirements for city council approval of boat ramp slips slash ramps, docks, boathouses and fishing piers. Providing for stability, providing for codification, providing for effective date.
All right, we have Jeff Schmucker from the C F R P C with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Got a brief overview of this item for you all. Okay, so what we've got for you, these are city-initiated amendments. I think this had come before council several, several months ago when there was a permit that we had gotten in the city. And there was a question of why is the city council seeing applications for boat docks? And, you know, maybe we should amend that. So here we are tonight. Essentially, it's addressing the city council's approval and review and approval process for boat docks, or sorry, docks, boat ramps and fishing piers. But it also changes some of the standards that are in there. We felt this was the opportunity to do this. What staff has done is reviewed Florida Department of Environmental Protection permitting standards as well as Highland County standards. As you know, a lot of property in the city has been annexed in over the years. Part of the reason to try to mimic to some degree Highland's County standards was to reduce non-conformities of docks as they do come into the city. So I'm just going to go through real briefly some of the updates that are in your package there. But essentially what those are, for new docks right now, the requirement is they can only be fifty feet long. That has come up a number of times over the years. We know in looking throughout Highland's County, there are boat docks that go out considerable distance beyond fifty feet. So looking at Highland's County's code, felt that this was a respectable standard to bring into the city. But essentially what that does, sorry, is provide a standard that a dock cannot extend out into a waterway more than five feet when that waterway is less than a hundred feet in width, right? Where you got a waterway that's more than a hundred feet in width, that dock can be up to ten percent of the width of that lake, but not to extend to a hundred feet. And again, that is to apply a standard to allow, because you have different sized lakes in the city, to allow different area of dock, dockage, if you will, on the different lakes in the city. With regard to boathouses, there were, there were no standards on those essentially. And again, consistent with the county's code is that no boathouse on a dock would be able to exceed eighteen feet in height as measured from the mean high lake level line. And then as far as the size of that boathouse, no boathouse exceeding a width of thirty-six feet as measured when we talk about perpendicular, or sorry, parallel to the waterline. So that would be if you think of it as the horizontal distance, and then not exceeding a depth of twenty-four feet as measured perpendicular to the waterway. Additionally, quickly, a few things. No dock or boathouse or pier can be constructed within ten foot of a setback as the extended side lot line. So if you think of the property on the waterway as those lines extend out into the waterway, not within ten feet of those lines. The permit or any permit shall not be issued for a dock or boathouse that would impede or obstruct access for somebody else to access that same waterway or another waterway from accessing that waterway. As we all know, not all lakes are completely circular. There's areas where they come up. So being cognizant of that, that we, we don't obstruct others' access to the waterway with these, with these regulations. This is additional one that we added in and to try to clarify where a property is adjacent to a waterway and it's bisected by a roadway. There's a number of these properties throughout the city. Circle Street is a good example where you've got a parcel that extends across a roadway. It's come up over the years that, you know, can you build a dock or an accessory structure on that portion down by the waterway? It's still part of the property, but it's a separate piece. And so does it, does it constitute, you know, being able to put an accessory structure or a dock in this case on that portion of the property? And so this is really just to clarify or to make it clear that, you know, those opportunities are there that if you do want to put a shed or you want to put a dock down on that, that waterway side of the property, so long as there is a primary structure on the property, like a home on the other side of the street, if you will, this just provides some clarity to recognize that you can, you can put a dock on that portion of the property. Docks and boathouses will not be able to be used for living purposes. Reflective markers, some safety standards that we've brought in there as well, markers on all docks, boathouses and fishing piers to make sure that they're marked well, especially at nighttime for boaters that are on the, on the waterways. And the one that you don't see at the bottom here, and it is stricken out in the package that you have, is this will all be handled administratively at this point. So anything moving forward, city staff will, will review and approve those permits.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff on this ordinance?
No.
Seeing none, entertain a motion for ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty-three, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Ordinance number oh five dash twenty twenty-three.
So ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code, specifically amending section two point oh five point zero zero pertaining to standards regulating accessory structures and amending section two point oh two point one one pertaining to standards regulating the size and location of fences on residentially zoned property. Providing for stability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Jeff?
Okay, again, I'll try to be brief on this one as well. The first, we kind of combined the two of these, these issues because they do both deal with accessory structures, fences also falling onto that umbrella. But the first part I want to talk about is the accessory structure section itself. Over the years, we've had a number of issues with the city's accessory structure section, and we've never been able to make sense of it or justify why the requirements that are in there today are there. And maybe some, some folks on the council may know this, but as the language reads today, one or more accessory structures are permitted on a property in that those accessory structures shall not be larger than the principal structure on the property. But further, the requirement that's been very difficult over the years is the maximum size of an accessory structure shall be limited to twenty-five percent of the minimum floor area for that zoning district. of the minimum floor area for that zoning district. So to to put that into application, the city's largest lot zoning district in the city is the R one A A. And the minimum floor area for a home in that that district or a primary structure is fifteen hundred square feet, which means twenty-five percent of that limits you to an accessory structure that's three hundred and seventy-five square feet. However, you do also allow for multiple accessory structures on a property. So we've heard over the years, so I can I can essentially put, you know, five accessory structures on my property, so long as individually they don't equate to more than three hundred and seventy-five square feet. But I can't put, you know, one accessory structure that totals, you know, a thousand square feet, whatever the number may be. It's been very hard to justify that over the years, and what we've had to do is send people through a variance process to get those requests handled. Furthermore, um, every zoning district has what's called a maximum lot coverage requirement, and that is in place for a number of reasons. Most importantly, that it leaves open space on the property, but it also serves a functional purpose. And generally, that's for drainage, um, so you have water runoff. You don't have a site that's completely built out, um, that would cause or otherwise cause problems on your site or have water runoff into the roadway or damage neighboring properties. But the maximum lot coverage requirement is essentially used to help regulate how much development or impervious area you have on your on your property. Working through the standards and the the, uh, the proposed amendments tonight, accessory structures should really fall under that umbrella. So in lieu of having a maximum requirement on the accessory structure at, you know, twenty-five percent of the the minimum floor area, but still allowing multiple accessory structures on the property, ultimately, um, for for any residential or non-residential district in the city, there's a maximum lot coverage requirement. So in residential, um, they're usually twenty-five to thirty percent, and those extend up in your commercial industrial areas up to perhaps fifty percent, I think the number is. So that becomes a more justifiable, uh, uh, I guess, calculation, if you will, for someone who wants to come in and develop something on their property. It's somewhat of a property rights issue as well. You you can build your primary structure on your lot up to thirty-five percent of that property if you wanted to. But I'm limited to the size of the accessory structure that I want to put on there. So trying to find a a calculation for for how staff can review these moving forward to help eliminate variance requests, make it easy both for, um, uh, property owners, homeowners, um, who are looking to put accessory structures on the property, as well as staff in reviewing these. Removing that that would, again, I apologize, but unjustifiable requirement of the twenty-five percent when we've got these other mechanisms in place to help regulate how a property develops, that would be the proposal for the accessory structure section to eliminate essentially that twenty-five percent requirement. Now additionally, um, there's a couple other cleanup items that we would like to also go ahead and amend here. One would be changing the Southern Standard Building Code to recognize the Florida Building Code. Again, recognizing that maximum lot coverage requirement. And I believe the last one, um, this is another one that we we weren't quite sure about, but, um, in provision G and and under accessory structures, it says that within such districts and residential zoning districts, bathroom facilities are not permitted, which would include tubs and showers. That's in direct conflict with the city's allowance to have guest dwellings on a property. So we've run into that as well. We tossed around the idea of saying, with the exception of where you have a guest dwelling, but I don't know, in talking with code enforcement or over the years that we've that I've been working here, that we've ever had, um, an issue with tubs and showers and accessory structures. But that is certainly something that can be enforced through code enforcement. But as it stands right now, it isn't a direct conflict with the the ability to have a guest dwelling on your property, which is allowed, um, but having those exclusions. So with that, um, I believe those 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 are the, um, the standards for accessory structures. And we do have the fences that are part of this as well, but I I did want to stop and see if anyone had any questions about that accessory structure section first.
Okay. Any questions? Just to clarify one more time on the accessory structure percentage of your lot, what was the final number that we were going with?
It's not, so we we would lean on the maximum lot coverage requirement. So for all of the residential districts, it's it's twenty-five percent.
Okay, so we're just going with a flat twenty-five percent, whether it's a house or an accessory is twenty-five percent total?
That's your maximum lot coverage, right.
Got it.
And they can't combine, they have to be less than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
Is it each one twenty-five percent?
It's combined, they have to be less than twenty-five, right?
Correct, right. So if somebody's got their house built out there and they've got a carport out there, they come in next month and they want to put a shed on the property, we calculate all of that to make sure that they don't impede on that twenty-five percent.
Okay. Any other questions? Please continue.
All right. So the second part of this is, um, placement of fences on residential properties, and it's it is specific to to corner lots. We we run into this a lot as well. So currently, in the city's code for residential properties, um, you cannot have a fence taller than six feet, period. There's areas where the fence can only be four feet, but as a maximum height, you cannot go higher than six feet. Further, the fence cannot be located, a six-foot fence cannot be located beyond the front building line of the primary structure or the home on the property. And so what I've tried to do here is take kind of a typical lot that you would see in Avon Park, corner lot. And it may be a little difficult to see there, but, um, there's some red dash lines. Those those are your typical front yard setbacks. For corner lots, the way that the code reads is that for a corner lot, the side street corner side of the property also has to reflect that that is a front yard. So both sides reflect front yards. Where the issue is, or where the issue is is has arisen with with the fences is that depending on the placement of the house on the property, um, as you can see in this example, the the dark blue line is essentially where you could put a six-foot fence today because it has to stop at the front building line of the home on the property. If you look just to the to the right of that solid blue line, you see a dashed blue line. That's additional area of the property, and we run into this a lot. You could have an accessory structure in that area because an accessory structure is allowed to the side in the rear yard. But you can't put your six-foot fence in that area of the yard because the code says it has to stop at the front building line of the house because both sides are considered front yards. The purpose of having the red dash line illustrating the front yard setback line is to, uh, to show that there's there's an additional area there of your property that, again, is your property, um, that should be able to be utilized that right now the code says that you can't use, um, or can't put a six-foot fence in. And again, we've had this come up over the years, and I think we just had another one a couple months ago that we had to take through a variance process to to allow them to use this portion of the property to enclose enclose their property. So just real briefly, um, in summary, the the amendments here would be to clarify that a six-foot fence may not extend beyond the front building line of the home, except as provided for corner lots. And then adding that a fence up to six feet in height may extend beyond the front building line of a home on a corner street side of the property up to and along the side street setback line, which is synonymous with that front yard setback. So it cannot extend beyond that twenty-five feet, but it allows you to build that fence up to that twenty-five foot line. Just a couple other housekeeping cleanup items in here to, um, to, uh, to address interior side and and rear yard fences. And I think the the one that we had some discussion with planning and zoning board, and we're certainly open to having the discussion with you all tonight, is that providing that in circumstances where a home does encroach into a required front yard setback, allowing folks to still build that fence up to the front building line. We have nonconformities in the city, and and the city attorney can weigh in on this as well, if you'd like. Where we've got nonconformities, where a home might be built, you know, twenty feet, so it's five feet into that setback line, recognizing that if somebody wants to build their fence up to that front building line on their house, that they could do that. It would it would make that not not conforming, but generally, it's it's something you wouldn't allow them to do because it would it would go, you know, beyond where the the setback line is. But a lot of times, it starts to, it looks a little funny, and we've seen that over the years. So if your home does sit there, it doesn't, for all intent and purposes, increase that nonconforming condition. The home is already there, so if you want to bring the fence up so it's flush with the front of the house, this provision would essentially allow you to do that. So we don't get into those those gray area, if you will, that we've we've come across over the years. How come I can't just put my fence up to the to the front of the house? It's four, it's just four feet forward. Yeah, we understand the house is nonconforming. This would allow you to do that, and I don't think we're in conflict in any way. Of course, we always would review this to see if there was any safety or health concerns, but, um, this would just kind of keep it consistent with other folks who would be doing the same thing.
So I'm assuming it would be everything built previous to approval date?
It would be, so it'd be anything that's there today, exactly, nonconforming.
Okay, and all requests for that will be handled by the city staff, you say?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Jeff on this one? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D eleven ordinance zero five twenty twenty-three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes.
Jeff, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, we have the bid award for the fire assessment fee services. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes, you have before you a bid award for a rate study for the fire assessment fee services from Stan Tech. They have done our rate study in two thousand and fifteen. It's recommended that we have a rate study every five years, so we're a little bit past it. They actually perform our, um, fire assessment fee services every year and have done that for the last five years. The bid comes in at forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. They were the only company to bid, and we have budgeted thirty-five thousand, um, so it's over budget, but we can use monies from, um, a position that's not been filled yet but is budgeted.
Okay. Any questions? On fire assessment fee bid?
I just, um, want to find out if perhaps we can get them to, um, just give us an order of magnitude it would cost to do a, um, uh, study for, uh, stormwater utility while they're here. You know, just so we can put it in the budget for next year and get that going as well. Go, obviously have to go out to for bid, but, you know, at least they can let us know what the budget for it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good idea.
Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number D twelve in the amount of forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, we have the approval of utility deferred payment plan lien agreement for eighteen forty-nine West Ward Road.
Yes, this is a standard utility deferred payment plan agreement, and we have obtained the application for new service, the deferred payment plan calculation, and the plan, um, lien agreement. Staff has verified the property is owned by the applicant, and it is, they have provided proof of insurance. So we recommend approval.
Okay, any questions on this deferred payment plan?
No.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D thirteen for the, uh, utility deferred payment plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number fourteen, we have the approval of Ascent Aviation Group, Inc. invoice. Melody?
Yes, we have invoice number nine-two-nine-zero-nine-eight in the amount of twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars and thirteen cents. Staff actually ordered the, um, fuel on April eighteenth. And the fuel has been delivered, so this is kind of just housekeeping. It's over the city manager's threshold, so we need approval to issue the check.
Okay, any questions on this invoice? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Ascent Aviation Group invoice.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Last call for questions.
I I do have a question.
Go ahead.
When we, uh, ordered that that many gallons, did we know in advance it was going to be over twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, it was actually the, um, approximate cost was twenty-seven thousand, um, for eight thousand gallons, but we only got seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven gallons.
Okay, all right, good, good enough, good enough.
And if I'm not mistaken, they typically come in an eight-thousand gallon truck.
They do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And this was, um, uh, they needed fuel out there, so it was not an emergency, but they were running low on fuel.
Right. No fuel means no fuel sales.
Correct.
All right. We had a motion in a second on this, did we?
Yes, sir.
Yep, so we just need a vote. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Any attorney updates?
Of course, legislature has, um, done their duty, and there are some rather unpleasant things that they've, um, dished out to the cities. If you'd like me to do a presentation, PowerPoint presentation on some of those items, they do, uh, one of them does affect you quite a bit. The other one having to do, to get signed by the governor, having to do with, um, you're doing, receiving, um, you can be sued for business damages for ordinances, uh, in under certain circumstances. And so they'll like that be something you want to know about. But there's also, you are now going to be required to be, do a far more comprehensive form when you do your financial, um, uh, statements. And, um, like to go through that with you.
Is it something you'd like to do at the next meeting, or?
I was thinking the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, sure. I think that'd be great. Anyone disagree with that?
No.
Okay. Be wonderful. Anything else, Attorney Burke?
That's it, thank you.
Is there any other staff updates? Not including the city manager update. Seeing none, city manager's report?
We got the one in there that is enough, really, that you approved has been canceled by the requester. They're looking to do a June, um, tenth event. They'll get that to us to get in front of you.
Okay.
The RFP, as you see it, is, um, run its sixty days. We've, nobody submitted anything, so discussion whether you want to put it back out, you want to go a different course. I recommend we put it back out.
Can we put it back out for perhaps a longer period of time? Is there any, uh, rules as to how long we can put it out there for? Jerry?
Uh, I'm sorry.
An RFP for a vacant piece of land that the city owns that used to be the Wild Building that was torn down a couple of years ago. He's asking, uh, the the RFP has run its course, and there was no bidders. Can we put the RFP out for again, and is there any stipulation as to how long we can put it out for?
No.
Okay, can we do it indefinitely, or?
Yeah, until you get enough, uh, well, you should probably set a a sta- a standard time so everybody knows when it has to be in by.
Okay.
And that you can stop, but then you can just do it again if they don't get enough.
So what if we were to do maybe quarterly increments, uh, but with the assumption that it will automatically go back out if there's no bidders each time?
Yeah, I'll see why not.
Yeah, quarterly with with the date, because they have to have minutes of doing it. And if we don't get anything, we'll just keep putting it out.
Right.
Okay, yep.
Got it. Is that, everyone agreeable to that?
That's fine with me, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, Nancy Fisk is here. She said she dropped off the love letter, so I'm going to read it off.
Okay.
It's a good one. This is the city of Avon Park from Historical Society of Avon Park, dated June eighth. Thank you for the recent work done by the city workers at the Depot Museum. We appreciate your working with us on a color of paint. It took a couple of tries, we appreciate your patience. The building looks great, getting the outside lighting in good order and working condition is very appreciated. We have recently installed security cameras and additional measure to curb vandalism. To be in compliance with our new lease, a power bill and one of the water and sewer, um, have been transferred to our name. Liability insurance with the Hartford for one year has been purchased, and the rent for the first ten years has been paid in advance. Thank you for being a good landlord. The museum is maintained by volunteers for the cit- of the citizens of Avon Park, and we appreciate the cooperation the city council and city manager have shown in assisting us to provide a destination for visitors, as well as an attractive and interesting place for all of us to take pride in our history. Thank you, Nancy Fisk, President.
All right. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Anything else, city manager?
No.
Public participation. We got, Mr. Berry, we got a couple of citizens back there. No, okay. Berry, go ahead.
Barry Foster, 3750 Highway 27 North. I am not a resident of the city of Charm, but I am an interloper. I come in on a regular basis. It's a shame those guys already have left because I was going to ask if any of them were going to have to drive this Main Street once they got it fixed. I will tell you that we don't park in Sebring because of the angle parking, and when we park in Lake Placid, we park on side streets. We can still walk to where we need to go, but pulling, backing out is a challenge. Expecting someone to stop while you back in is a greater challenge. We've been trained to go to Walmart. We've been trained in the angle parking to pull in forward. I think that pulling in backward will be an interesting exercise for y'all. But I will tell you that at one point in Avon Park's life, there was an ordinance which disallowed through truck traffic on Main Street.
Still does.
And it still does. So if you wanted to, you could enforce an ordinance where they only have local delivery, like to the pizza joint or to the Jackaranda, to whoever else is going to get their deliveries by truck. But if you want to stop truck traffic, you can. I can tell you that my wife and I have traveled all over the state of Florida. We've gone to Tarpon Springs, we've gone to the Land, we've gone to New Smyrna Beach, we've gone to Vero Beach, gone down to Venice and the Comas, we've gone down to Boca. I have never seen a chicane operation like that in my entire life. I will tell you that in the Land, I got stuck in a traffic circle with people who knew exactly where they were going. I was not one of them, and we got, finally got spit out some, I had to go put on my GPS to find out where I was going. I had to take the back way. Mr. Barnard is right. If this is the way the Main Street goes, we'll be driving the back streets. And just so you know, we went to the Blueberry Festival. We parked down here right behind Mr. Swear's office. We walked right across the street, walked right in. We didn't have to walk blocks. We just walked right in, and I will tell you, when people get really, when they get really cooperative, is like when they want your parking space. If they want your parking space, they'll stop, and they'll let you do pretty much whatever you want. But if they're not just doing your parking space, all you probably are going to hear is their horn. I wish you the best of luck, but I think that that's probably the most convoluted traffic pattern that I've ever, I've been doing this a long time. It's the most convoluted traffic pattern I have ever seen. So thank you very much again. I just am an interloper. I just come to Avon Park to go to Eric Swear's office, or go to the Jack, or go to church. We don't live here, but we come in.
So Berry, just one question real quick.
Sure.
Are you saying that you prefer parallel parking over angle parking?
Oh, absolutely.
Really?
Absolutely. You know, I, I don't, I don't really, we don't walk, there's nothing here yet to walk up and down the streets for.
Right.
I mean, if this was like Tarpon Spring, is this like Diocletian Avenue where there's little shops, and you can park in a little space in the back and then you kind of walk around? I'm all about that, but at this point, there's not that, this is a destination place. It's like the shopping center that I work in. You've got to kind of be going there to go there. Nobody goes and walks up and down Fairmont Center Square to go to the different shops. I mean, either you go into the restaurant, or you go into the first aid care, or you're, I mean, of course, the one big restaurant and the movie house is closed down, but it's a destination point. And at this point, Avon Park is a destination point, and I think it's a great idea that you've got, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and its helping hands trying to bring events downtown. That's a very cool thing. But again, if you do that, you're going to have people parking, and they're going to be spending a while there. So they'll park a ways back. I mean, I'm still in pretty good health. We can still walk. But Ms. Johnson's right. There's a lot of people who can't see past the hood ornament on their car, and I'll tell you, I have been passed also by these EV scooters. So it's, it's a challenge, and I wish you the best of luck with this, but I think that these guys should be required to drive Main Street with the chicanes and stuff the way they have it set up if they're going to, if they're going to do it. It's really easy to plant something and then leave. I watched, I watched with, with great frustration when the city tried to work with the DOT to do a downtown Main Street, streetscaping project, where they would have the big arms that came over. It was going to be really beautiful and everything, you know? It just, it didn't work out, and those guys left, and they changed the name of their company, and they couldn't even sue them for damages. So I, I will not be at the meeting tomorrow. I have another obligation that I have to be at, and again, I don't, I don't live here. It's not my tax dollars, but it may or may not encourage me to come.
That was the, the big benefit, is that the road is going to be getting repaved anyways.
Yeah, right.
So if it was ever going to be a city initiative to change it, it would be too expensive to ever do it.
Right.
But by doing this, it's basically free to the city because it's already going to be getting torn up to get resurfaced. So if ever it was going to happen, an event like this is really the only time it could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Fiscally.
Yeah, so I just, I just, I watched this, and I looked at it, and it reminded me of a couple of places that I've been that was, was very, we went to watch the Cleveland Browns play the Pittsburgh Steelers at the Rubber Bowl in Akron, and to slow traffic, what they did was, as you came in, they made the center line begin to weave, and then they began to crisscross. It looked like spaghetti, and you were so disoriented, you had to slow down and figure out what was going on, and that's how they did it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's how they did, but it was a confusing, it was a confusing way to go. And my wife accuses me of knowing the back way to everywhere, you know? And, and I do. You've lived someplace long enough, you know that, but I would tell you that Mr. Barnard's, now, we don't speed through the residential areas, you know, because there's a lot of kids on bikes who, again, they think that any kind of traffic ordinance is kind of a suggestion for them. They don't.
Or a challenge.
Or a challenge. I mean, I had a, I was going to a place on Wolf Street. Friend of mine lives on Wolf Street, and we were pulling in, and this kid just came rolling, and I cannot tell you how sure I was he's going to pull in front of me at the last second. He swerved and went right, you know, but scared living daylights on him.
Sure.
You know, I mean, because they, they come out of nowhere. But we'll be going on the, on the back streets and leave that to the professionals. My favorite chicane is turn 10 at Sebring.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That concludes our regularly scheduled agendas. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
Okay, can I say something?
Sure. Just give you name and address for the record.
Carrie Bryant, 632 South Riverdale Road, Avon Park, Florida. Nope, don't live in the city, but y'all know me. So going to what he just said, I'm very much in favor of Main Street doing the parallel parking because, yes, like, I understand some people are like having a fit about it or whatever because backing up.
Parallel or angled?
No, angled.
Okay.
I'm in angled. Yeah, I want the angle because it's going to bring back to our city what needs to be brought back. Like, all of our stuff is coming back. Like, we got the new gym on the Main Street, we have Thankful Hearts, we have restaurants. Hopefully, we're going to have a lot of more businesses coming. That's my hopes. It's going to attract more businesses to open up on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And slow everything down on Main Street.
Yep.
I don't care if you have to stop for five seconds to let somebody back out of a parking spot, like, then so be it. If you don't want to have the patience to go down Main Street, then there's Lake Avenue, there's Memorial, there's a whole ton of different ways to get to 27 just besides Main Street.
Sure.
Sebring has that down home fill. Frostproof has that down home fill. Lake Placid has that down home fill. So I feel like doing that, like, I'm all in agreeance with y'all for that. The second thing I want to ask about is, I know that y'all just said thank y'all very much too, by the way, for letting us have the Fourth of July Firework Festival thingy.
Yep.
But have y'all thought about by any chance a PA system on Main Street for like, this would go in accordance with, you know, the Friday Night Live and all that kind of stuff, but have y'all thought about putting a PA system on Main Street like Wachulla does?
Yeah, it's been brought up several times, basically having a music system. That way, you know, during Christmas and all that, you can do it. The issue has always been the cost of actually connecting all of Main Street because it's roughly, you know, a mile long.
Mm-hmm.
So you can do it in specific sections, but even then it's expensive.
Even if we just did the middle part?
Right. So basically, if you can get a grant to do a section, would be the idea. It's just we haven't come across a grant that that could be used for yet.
Okay, so would y'all be opposed to, like, sponsorships or people donating to go towards that?
I mean, I think that would be great. I just wouldn't underestimate the cost of something like that. It's, it's pretty substantial.
I have connections. So then, with that being said, it could also be used, like, you know when that little kid went missing, you know, the other day? Like, I say the other day, but the other week or whatever? It could also be used for emergency broadcasting systems as well. Like, if the city had something important to put out, y'all could use it for that as well. So I didn't know if that was a thing, but I just didn't know if y'all had, like, talked about doing a PA system or if it was something that was?
It's been brought up, but never to the point that, you know, we've gone out and actually gotten bids for, you know, a specific area or anything like that.
Okay.
Because we just couldn't find grant money, and there, nobody on the council was ever willing to, you know, spend regular standard tax dollars for something like that, because it would be several hundred thousand dollars at least.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then with the Friday Night Live events, I'm sorry I wasn't here, I just, like, literally hauled butt from Davenport with my job. So with the Friday Night Live events, I know Sherry and Shane didn't, like, elaborate on this, but there would be some times where we would do, like, a Friday night movie night, like, at the gazebo. So does that, is that okay for people just to walk across the street instead of shutting just that little part down from Lake Avenue to the Jackaranda?
Yes, I'll just tell you how that particular item went. Basically, we didn't express, didn't express the desire for them to do it on Main Street.
Lake Avenue.
They were kind of trying to put it on Lake Avenue, and at this point in time, they were supposed to go to all the businesses in that section of Lake Avenue and ask them if they'd be agreeable to it. So that's kind of where it's at, at this point in time.
Okay, so if, but if we want to do a movie, that's what I'm asking. If we want to do a movie night on Main Street, like at the gazebo?
Yep.
You know, and do that, would we have to shut down Main Street to do that?
I don't think that you would have to if you've got, say, you know, 10 to 30 people, but if you're going to start saying, hey, there's 200 people over here, that's, that's an issue, and especially kids and things like that.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, just, you need to be careful not to let, constrain the area so that kids don't wander into the roadway.
Right.
Okay, so then this is a question, because she did tell me that y'all didn't want to, DOT was not, was going to basically fight us on shutting it down once a month, right?
It's just the, the notice requirements and the signage, you would basically have to have a big flashing sign out there on Main Street every single weekend.
Oh, not, no, just once a month. Okay, so if we do?
No, you have to notice it before and after is the issue.
Oh, I got you.
So by the time you factor all that in, it would be there three out of the four weeks of the month.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, so if we did the movie night then, and instead of shutting it down once a month?
Right.
Then if we did the movie night, like, let's say quarterly, like, every three months, or once every, you know, four months, whatever, however we work it out, would that be an issue on getting, you know, the paperwork put in to have just that one night, just that one Friday Night Live event?
So what the suggestion to them was, that that's less of an issue, however, unless it's a very special event, people are always going to be giving you pushback for shutting down the road.